No, they won't be open until Wednesday.
Welcome, everybody, to our Monday, December 9th, City Council meeting. We have a roll call, please, to establish form.
Harry Meyer?
Here.
Mickey Snyder?
Here.
Terry McLung?
I'm here.
Susan Harmon?
Here.
Bob Thomas?
Here.
Melissa Green?
I'm here.
We have six.
All right. Stand. I pledge allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additions, corrections?
I hate to do this, but I would like to add an item in regards to the auditorium.
I'll second that.
If we don't vote on it tonight, we'll lose an opportunity.
With what, with the auditorium?
If we don't vote on it tonight, we would lose an opportunity related to finances.
Oh, okay. My last second.
Okay.
All right, anything else?
So where's that going?
If there's nothing else, all in favor of the agenda is amended, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. Motion to approve the minutes for November 25th.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor of the minutes is submitted, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right. We got a couple vacancies in the planning commission, and also have one, looks like, in CAPC that expires.
No, that was a reservation.
Okay. So that brings us to public comments.
I own three businesses in Eureka Springs, least of which is not the Red's Pizzeria at 173 South Main Street. So, I actually made notes this time. So we've been discussing the entertainment district quite a lot lately at every meeting, and something that was kind of frustrating to my wife and I is that, you know, we really are in support of this. We really want to be part of this. We're part of the Main Street district, we're part of downtown, and there's been a lot of discussion about a sunset clause in case this thing is a disaster, so we can cancel it. What I haven't heard from anybody yet is if this is a success, if this doesn't cost us an arm and a leg and a budget overrun, are we going to expand this to include, like my business? I mean, because really, what this amounts to at this point is a frustration for us, because we currently already have people who would love to leave with liquor, and we tell them no. As soon as we pass an entertainment district, which this is not me saying, "Don't pass it, please pass it," as soon as we pass entertainment district, then I have to deal with the onslaught of folks that go, "Well, why didn't you opt into it?" And that's what's going to happen. And so we, you know, so yet again, we're in support of it. We would love to see something moving forward that would say, "If this is a success," or even if it's not a non-success. I mean, you know what I'm saying? As long as it's not a disaster and we're canceling it, we really want in on this, you know, in the very near future. You know, so I wanted to bring, you know, public comments being at the very first was kind of something that a lot of talk was talked about, how people bring their drinks around town, and I just wanted to show off my cup, that somebody, once a month, will leave these cups at my facility, one of my restaurants. So, the idea that they're already doing this, and, you know, yet again, this is not in support of public intoxication or public drinking, but I know, I think, I feel that this is, will be a success, and so those are my comments for tonight. Thank you, guys. Damon Hincky here with the Eureka Springs Chamber of Commerce. Tomorrow is Morning Brew, and what we are talking about, I guess I should tell you where that's going to be. At the community center, in the meeting room, what we are talking about is regional tourism. So we have some experts from Branson and also from northwest Arkansas, and we will be talking about what is the fit and what does the tourists expect as they come over to the general area, and how we stitch those pieces together, whether it be crystal bridges, mountain biking, family vacations in Branson. How does that all fit together overall for us as a community and as business owners, and how can we launch that forward for more success? So, that's tomorrow. The actual presentation will be at 8:30 a.m. We start drinking coffee at 8:00 a.m. at the community center. Please come up and join us. That's a partnership with the Main Street Organization and the Chamber of Commerce. The second part of my comments are just really, it looks like you've got a nice draft here of an entertainment district, and I see that the expiration clause is for June 30th, 2019. That was going to be my only comment, is just set something that seems to be a good test, and let's test it. Whether you're a resident, business owner, as long as we have a shut-off and a safety switch, we can always redo the entire ordinance. We can just make the adjustment of taking out the final date there, or adjust it however need be, but if we don't ever test it, I think we're going to lose out as a community in not knowing what the potential actually could have been. So, thanks for the comments. See you.
Okay, that concludes our public comments for tonight. Brings us to our unfinished business, ordinance number 2290 of animal care. Motion to discuss?
Motion to discuss. Second.
All right, this is, we're on our second reading regarding the animal care on occupied property. Anybody want to start off? Yes, ma'am.
I'd like a motion that we read ordinance number 2290 on a second reading by title only.
Second.
Suspending?
The rules?
Suspending the rules.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Just, could people please move their cellphones away? Because it's messing with them.
Chairman, I'm here. Hearing. Thanks.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2290, ordinance amending the Eureka Springs Municipal Code Regarding Animal Care.
Need a motion to approve the ordinance 2290 on the second reading?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2290 on a second reading.
Second.
Further discussion? Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I would like to ask the city attorney again, because I'm very concerned about passing an ordinance that does not, that cannot be enforced. And I'm just, to say that you've got to prove that someone is not occupying their home on a regular daily basis, to me is just open-ended. I mean, you can occupy your home for 30 minutes a day on a regular basis, and how are you going to do it if that didn't happen, you know? What I heard you say last time, and maybe, maybe I'm over-focusing on it, but it's almost like you're going to have to have neighbors that are willing to testify that they've been watching the house 24 hours a day for the last two weeks, and there has been no occupation. That concerns me. How do you prove it?
It's going to be difficult to prove. If you make a period, though, that says you've got to be able to testify eight hours a day, or they're less than eight hours, or whether you say that they've got to be there 30 minutes, or whatever, you've still got to have somebody testify to that. You can't necessarily station a police officer outside the house and leave him there for three days to say that no one came to the house. So yes, neighbors may very well have to testify against neighbors. It's going to be a very difficult ordinance to enforce, but one of the things that we find with ordinances is that most people, not all people, but most people are law-abiding, and if you put something on the books, they're going to try to follow what's there. And if they try to follow it, then they're probably going to meet the spirit of the ordinance. They're probably going to be there to check on their animals and make sure their animals are not mistreated by being locked in uninhabited, a boat. But you've got to have somebody to testify if somebody runs a stop sign, and the officer just may be there in the right moment and see it.
Well, I appreciate it. I'm sorry.
With this, it's just a matter of, hopefully, most of the citizens will be law-abiding, and it won't be a big issue of how many times we have to enforce it. Hopefully, we won't have to enforce it a lot. But on those occasions when we do, we very well may be looking for neighbors, but in the incident that brought this up to the attention of the town, I think, last year, there was neighbors that were willing to say, "We saw there was nobody there." Now, whether they would have actually come and wanted to swear that in front of a judge, maybe not. Some people get cold feet when they're told that they've got to come to court and testify, but part of what the whole judicial system of this country is founded on is we believe that you can compel witnesses, if you have to, to come testify. So if you're going to bring it up to the police and say, "My neighbor is locking their dog in the house and not going to visit it," then you probably better be willing to have the police officer bring you a subpoena in a few weeks or a few months that says you've got to go and tell the judge that, because I'll issue a subpoena if I need to, to get a witness. We do occasionally now, like 37 times a month, a month, for other things besides dogs.
I appreciate your perspective, because especially the part about the fact that even if it's very, very difficult to enforce, there is a benefit in having it on the books.
Anybody else? Got a motion, second, to approve it on the second reading. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that takes us to our next discussion. Is ordinance number 2291 rezoning 187 Huntsville Drive.
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. Mr. McLung?
I'd like to make a motion, we suspend the rules and read ordinance number 2291 for its third and final reading by title only.
A second. Any discussion? Hearing none.
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Mr. McLung?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Six-zero. Ordinance number 2291, ordinance amending the zoning of certain real property within corporate city limits of Eureka Springs, Arkansas, commonly known as 187 Huntsville Road.
Mr. McLung?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we pass ordinance number 2291 on its third reading.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none.
Mr. McLung?
Yep.
Mr. Thomas?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Snyder?
Yes.
Ms. Harmon?
Yes.
Six-zero.
All right. That brings us up to our third item for unfinished business ordinance for permanent entertainment district, sunset clause. Mr. McLung and Ms. Harmon?
Motion to discuss.
Second.
All right. Comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Meyer?
Last time we had a meeting, I got sort of put on the defensive over my survey, and so I didn't get a chance, didn't even think about reading the results of my survey, but I'd like to read them. Several more came in, so we're over 52, 53, but the results didn't change, and they were rounded, you know, yes, 50/50. It was like 49 to 51. That's why they came out like this. But the first question on the survey was, "Do you want a permanent entertainment district?" And it was 50/50. Most people hummed and hawed, and the support is kind of weak. The second question was, "Do you think a permanent entertainment district is important for Eureka Springs to be competitive with other tourist destinations and markets?" And this is interesting, it's 60% of the respondents said no, even, you know, many of those that said it's okay to do it, they said, "Well, it's really not going to bring us any more business." The next question, "Do you think the entertainment district will improve your business sales by increasing the youthfulness and appeal of Eureka Springs?" And 60% said no. Most merchants don't agree with the benefits of creating an entertainment district, we're valid, or would deliver on those benefits. Number four, "Are the most recent proposed boundaries acceptable?" 60% said no. The permanent boundaries are not supported by most businesses. Number five, "Will you allow persons with designated containers of alcohol to enter your store to browse or shop?" 60% said no. In fact, you know, several were quite adamant about it. Even tattoo parlors, of course, said, "Hey, you can't let anybody in here without the, oh, we can't even give them a tattoo if they've had a drink." Number six, "Do you feel your decision to allow or not allow will alienate your customers' current or potential?" 80% said no. So, they're not afraid of alienating anybody. Number seven, "If an entertainment district in the proposed boundaries is established, do you feel more city services than currently available will be needed?" 80% said yes, and that makes sense. We're going to have to clean up, I think the police chief has already decided that he's going to have two cops on the beat during the weekend, so that can't be argued. Number eight, "What is your primary type of business?" And, you know, people answered, shops or whatever. And then nine was for current ABC holders. "Do you see issues with enforcing patrons from leaving with an alcoholic beverage that is not in an approved container?" 70% of those business holders, ABC permit holders, said yes. 70% said yes. It's going to be a problem. Then B, under that category, "Patrons with an open container alcoholic beverage of any kind will not be allowed to enter your premises. Do you see issues with enforcing this?" 80% of them said, "Yes, of course." And C, "Entertainment districts will have day-night specific rules. Do you foresee issues in making sure your patrons do not leave with a beverage after those days and hours?" And that was a 50/50 answer. So, there's some facts from businesses, and these is all on, I visited all the people, businesses that are on that route in the district. That's not even the citizens. So, there we go.
Mr. McLung?
What is the likelihood of participation between vendors of alcoholic beverages? Is it 100%?
No.
50%? 2%? I mean, what, is there any idea that, of what's been polled? You know, were they signed on the dotted line or something saying that they're willing to participate? I'm not really sure where we are with that. Does anyone have that figure I could have today?
I can answer that in that two of the establishments said absolutely not. They were not going to participate and allow anybody to leave their place with alcohol, whether it was a district or not.
I mean, that, well, it could be a major place or a minor place. Is it, I mean, I don't know, you've got...
One's a restaurant, and one's a bar.
Yeah, give me a little bit of information, and then I intend to make a subsidiary motion, so listen closely. I don't know how many of you at the table have actually gone back and looked at Act 812 from the state legislature to see what they said with regards to entertainment districts, but basically, they were amending Title 14, Chapter 54, Subchapter 14. And what they did, they came down to Item 3B-1, and I'm going to leave out a lot of the citations and stuff and just tell you what it says. It says, "A city may by ordinance create a designated entertainment district." And I just want to point out that that's a double-edged sword, because it gives power to the city council to create the district. It gives you the power to decide if you want one, if you don't want one, if you do want one, what days will it operate, the hours it'll operate, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That power is city council's and no one else's. The other side of that sword, though, is the responsibility, and that kind of leads into what Mr. McLung was saying, "Because council has a responsibility to gather as much information, subjective and objective, as possible, before making a decision as to whether or not the entertainment district will ultimately benefit the health, safety, and welfare of the citizens. Council members have five sources of information to deal with at this point in time, but it has also made a commitment to reach out with one more. Right now, you have the recommendation of the Entertainment District Committee, you have the recommendation from the mayor, you have the information that you gathered at first Town Hall Workshop, you have the results from Mr. Meyer's survey, and you have the public comments and personal contacts that all of us have had with various members of the community. The council, at its meeting on October 28th, agreed to a second Town Hall Workshop where those attending would be able to look at the specific written information under consideration. That was when we were dealing with the Entertainment District Committee's recommendation. Now, we have those recommendations, and we have the recommendations from the mayor. So we have agreed to have a Town Hall meeting where those two options will be available, and people would be able to discuss them and possibly come up with even more alternatives. Also, our responsibility to gather information means we need to be able to answer Mr. McLung's question. You know, if we still have unanswered questions, I'm not sure that it's time to run. But my motion, my subsidiary motion, is to postpone consideration of this proposed ordinance until the first council meeting after the second Town Hall Workshop, and to make this postponement a special order.
I'll second that.
So basically, you want to table the motion until the first meeting of the month, January?
No. Is that what he said?
He postponed, which is a tabling.
Until?
Until January the first meeting in January.
Tabling is until, tabling is when you're going to bring it up again at the same meeting. I'm suggesting...
No, that's not, go ahead. I'm not, go ahead.
He said second workshop.
No, that's fine.
I'll repeat it.
Go ahead.
I have preliminary definitions here, if anybody would like to read.
Mr. Thomas, go ahead, please, sir.
You're the one that...
Mr. Thomas, would you please repeat your motion again, sir? Please, sir.
I will.
Thank you.
But I'd like to explain what postponement means to the people at the table, since you have told them we were tabling it.
I didn't say that. I was questioning.
Are you ready? I move to postpone consideration of the proposed ordinance until the first council meeting after the second Town Hall Workshop, and to make this postponement a special order.
Okay, we got a motion and a second discussion. Ms. Harmon?
Was this on his, or am I, can I still ask a question about the previous?
I think we're asking, actually, on subsidiary motion.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
What does special order mean, Bob?
Special order means that when it does come to council, it will be the first item of business. It'll be...
I see. Yeah, that's no problem. I just didn't know what that meant.
I didn't know. All right. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Snyder?
As long as people understand that that gives you plenty of time, meaning all of us, not one or two of us, that gives everybody plenty of time to look into these answers that need answering, to do a hard check, preferably in person, of the various bars and restaurants who serve, find out exactly who will and will not participate. You know, you could have one person participating, which would mean it wouldn't even be worth it. Or you could have 10. You need to know, and sending out a survey ain't going to cut it. So, if this passes, it needs to be understood. People have to take the time and go out to the establishments and talk. They need to talk to the people. They need to check on all of these questions that we have. Don't assume we'll get plenty of answers at the workshop. We will get good answers, but we need to, we need to take ourselves out to the various establishments and talk to them face-to-face. That is your biggest thing to go by, and that's what would make his thing work.
Okay, further discussion? Ms. Harmon?
I just have a, just kind of a note on what Mickey just said. I think if there is a meeting, then those establishments that are for or against should be able to fill out a, I don't know, I don't want to say a survey, but a form that states what their business is and if they're for or they're against, and then that way you have a written thing. So then, if somebody on, say, a committee or even city council could look through those and say, "Okay, we've got, you know, 20 bars in town, and by looking at this list, you've got a signature from that owner or from that manager, whatever, saying that they are for or against," then that is data that we can use and be able to say that it is legitimate information that has come as a result of that Town Hall. I just, I don't feel comfortable having, I like to see hard evidence. Do you know what I'm saying? So I like to see the data and have it written in front of me as opposed to just, you know, so-and-so said the other for it, or so, this person said they're for it, and this person said they're for it. I'd like to see the actual data in front of me. So, just a suggestion.
Mr. McLung?
Was Ms. Snyder suggesting a council pub crawl?
I second that.
Not a bad idea.
Curious.
No, that would be interesting. That really would.
Ms. Snyder?
What Susan's saying is right. We do need this in writing, but don't expect them all to show up at the Town Council. I know what the hours are like that they keep, and you'll have very few business owners being able to make, and I don't care if it's day or night that we would set it. That's why we need to take our time. It's part of what we were voted in to do, is take our time and go to them. If we could get, and I don't know if it's even possible, if we can get a list of businesses that would, you know, alcoholic businesses that could be participating, then we can each, as we go around, we can sit there and take it in and have them sign off, and then there's our answers in writing. But that's what we need to do, but no. I don't care how it works in cities. It doesn't work Town Hall-wise in Eureka, it never has. They work too many hours to be able to count on them for that, no matter how important it is. So we should go out one by one and hit them all. Want to call them?
Ms. Harmon?
I just, I hesitate to do that, because I do not want an individual to feel influenced by someone. I want them to be able to come and do it under their free will, knowing that the form that they filled out has been turned in, and they have not been influenced by anyone coming door-to-door. So, they have to take that opportunity to do that. Now, whether or not they can pick up one of those forms at a Town Hall, or they can go to City Hall and pick something up, or that we can mail to them so that they can turn it in. I just would rather not see someone take it to them and then have that discussion with them, because, not saying that if I were that business owner, I wouldn't be able to tell that person I'm for it or I'm not for it, but I don't want them to feel like they're being influenced by anyone. I want them to be able to do that on their own, under their own free will, and provide that information as accurately as possible as it relates to their business.
The survey that I distributed had these questions on it, and all it asked for was what type of business, retail or whatever. They were anonymous. I self-addressed them, I stamped a lot of them. I left them at the business and I said, "I can come by if you want to share it with me and take it, or you can mail it in and be anonymous," because many of them wanted to be anonymous. There's pressure about this on a lot of businesses. A lot of people are feeling pressure, one way or the other. And that, yeah, they need to get a form, but it needs to be anonymous. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, this is just a suggestion, but if my subsidiary motion or passes, then someone at the table could make a motion to nominate two or three of the council people to design the workshop. For instance, I came over with Don Matt today to look at seating because I was not real happy with seating at the last workshop, but if we are concerned about how the workshop is going to go, then you could nominate two or three people to design more.
Ms. Snyder?
Whether we take a form in there and stay and chat with them or drop them off, it doesn't matter. If we have them send it back to city, you know, take it in and drop it off or mail it, however they'd like to do it, that's the biggest thing. But since we represent the people in town, they really appreciate it when we take the time to talk to them. And we don't have to push our standing. They have known in the past that they can give an honest answer without any repercussion. Whether the person, the councilman that they're talking to is for or against doesn't matter, or at least it never used to. But like I said, taking the time to drop it off and say, "We'd appreciate it if you would take this to city hall or mail it," that still makes it anonymous and it works out just fine. And they are seeing that we care enough about the situation to take our time to go in and talk to them.
Anyone else? Reread the motion, please, ma'am.
Help me if I didn't get it correct, Bob, please. Let's see, Mr. Thomas' motion was to postpone until, excuse me, the first council meeting after the second town hall workshop and do so by special order, putting it as the first item on the agenda. And Ms. Snyder seconded.
To postpone consideration of this proposed ordinance.
Yes.
Oh, I didn't read that one.
But, okay, but it's really the same thing, right? I'll make sure your phrase gets into the minutes.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so move. I have a question. How do you want to set up this workshop?
Maybe somebody else would want to take, make a motion to have a couple of people work on it. I'd prefer not to, but if nobody else wants to, I will.
I can help out as long as there's a couple more.
It's hard and simply have some real...
Yeah, I can, I can. You need somebody. I mean, we're talking about January, correct?
There wasn't a date for the, there wasn't a date for setting up the workshop. That's what I'm trying to figure out, when and how we want to do this workshop. Are we going to wait until our next meeting?
Well, that's, see, I was, brought this up tonight because I didn't want to wait because I just lazy, I'm hoping we could set the night tonight, the meeting date tonight.
Well, I was hoping in your subsidiary motion that would include that.
Right.
Ms. Harmon?
Can I make a motion that we set up a workshop date for the permanent entertainment district in January?
6th, January 6th, is it, is it not council meeting? Oh, you're out of town?
I would say the 6th might be a little too early after the holidays, and we might look at something maybe the second week of...
We should definitely have a council meeting first to set rules.
Is on the 13th?
Yes.
Okay, so...
The 6th is the first Monday.
First Monday. How long do we think we would need?
We can have it down to 6, I think, without a problem.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that it's on, that we set a date for a workshop, town hall meeting, whatever we're going to call it, for the permanent entertainment district on January 6, 2020.
I'll second that.
Around what time?
I'm going to say probably 6 o'clock.
Okay, wait a minute, so what you're setting up is the workshop date, not the time to work on it?
I'm setting up the public.
Okay. We need time to be able to put it together, and this is the holiday season? Or are we?
Yeah, the survey.
Okay, that gives us two weeks, three weeks.
My motion was to set up a workshop, a public workshop. That means everybody gets to come, everybody gets to voice their opinion. I'd like to do that on the 6th of January at 6:00 PM, 6th of January, 2020.
Who was the second?
I was.
Thank you.
Okay, the point I was trying to make was this is the holiday season, a lot of people are going to be in and out of town. We're supposed to get together to plan the workshop, and that's not giving us a lot of time.
I think we have probably enough information already on the table in front of us to be able to have a legitimate public workshop at this time. When did we begin talking about the, when did the committee form?
Months ago.
Yeah, okay.
It's okay.
So I'm going to leave it as that. You're voting.
Are we going to, we talking about a workshop on a, just to put together a survey to poll the alcoholic beverage?
No, I asked for a public workshop.
Okay, well, we need to, we need to poll the bars first.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say, we're not, we don't have enough time in a couple of weeks to be able to get the info.
Well, we can poll the bars in one day.
Oh, really? You're going to sit there and walk all over town and hit the bars? Sure, it's like a puffball.
Okay, we get a couple of people together to put together a poll, we can probably do get that done. We don't, we can ask the bars, we can ask the bars, that's easy. Mr. McClung?
I think the first thing you need to do is get the draft of the ordinance out to the public so they can see what it is you're going to be discussing in the first place. You think that's not a good idea, or I think that would certainly be appropriate.
Definitely.
And then, and then the bars will be able to make, and restaurants, an educated decision on whether they want to be in or out. I think, I think, you know, they're kind of going into the dark unless they have that, so it'd be nice to see that it was dissimulated to them, you know, through the newspapers, through emails. There, certainly, they, I would think they would all have emails through, and that, if Ann doesn't have those emails, the CHPC will have. So, you know, I think that we need to get it to them in as many ways as we can and possibly follow up with a phone call to them and say, "Hey, you need to be looking for this because we're planning this meeting, and it's important for you to be there and be aware of what's going to be discussed." That's my thoughts. With somebody else's.
Mr. Thomas?
I would like to amend Ms. Harmon's motion to ask Mr. Harmon, I mean, to ask Ms. Harmon to design a questionnaire that she would feel comfortable handing out at the workshop, and Mr. McClung to send out the information to the bars. And whatever you want to do before the workshop, you're free to do.
I believe in talking in person.
Yeah, those two people.
The whole...
And those two things, items. That was an amendment.
Is there a second?
Um...
I don't even know what that said.
I said, "I want you to get those, that ordinance out to all the bars."
John.
He's not my boss.
Is there a second?
I need clarification first.
What's your clarification?
Okay, what Terry said about getting, making sure the people know what this whole thing is about, that's what I automatically assumed would be included in the paperwork that you take to these places and ask them to read, fill out, and send back. Is that, does that meet with your approval?
Yeah, I think that'd be great if you'll do that.
You said you wanted Terry to do it?
No, Terry said he's going to ask CHPC to send out an email.
I said that they have the addresses.
They said you are CHPC.
No, dear, he did not say that.
Okay, we got, we're looking for a second.
As long as all that's included, I'll second that.
I think what we just have to remember is that the workshop, the public workshop is not the end-all as far as the discussion goes. Depending upon what is put in the paper, the invite can be that they can go to city hall, they can pick up additional information, they can call city council. When they're here at the particular meeting, there can be a form that they fill out, whether or not they're for or against the permanent entertainment district, as well as copies of the ordinance can be at that, at that public workshop. So I think there are, I think maybe we're getting lost in the weeds a little bit as far as when and how we get the information out to people, because I think that can be communicated through the public announcement.
Then I withdraw my amendment.
I guess I'll withdraw my second and deal anyway.
Okay. What was, is there, what's the original motion?
That goes back to Ms. Harmon's...
Dates.
...motion for a workshop on January 6th at 6:00 PM, and Ms. Green seconded.
Further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so move.
So where does that leave us with the original motion? Oh, that was just to discuss. Thank you.
All right, okay, I think we're done with that. All right, that brings us back down to Item 4, discussion of feral cats.
Motion to discuss.
Meow.
Uh, Ms. Green? Are you feral yet?
If we want to take the lovely county citizens survey, 85% of citizens say we do have a cat, feral cat problem. Now, it could be green forest voting for all, you know, but I, anyway, I have spoken with the Humane Society. We do have a catch and release, but our spay and neuter fees have gone up, and if the city is willing, not monetarily, but to work with the Humane Society, the animal control, such as traps and, you know, working with them, it will enable them to apply for grants to get the cost down so that trapped animals can be, you know, neutered and spayed, you know, it's called catch and release. Mickey was the one that brought it up, so I would like to make a motion to postpone this till next year, till after I talk to the animal control and maybe Brian. I'll second.
Okay. Discussion on postponement? All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that brings us up to new business, discussion of additional budget meeting and setting dates, Mr. Thomas and Ms. Green.
Yeah.
Motion to discuss. Second?
Second.
Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, I actually dismissed the 2020 budget workshop that was held two weeks ago, and I'm, my question is, is that the only workshop we're going to have on the 2020 budget, or is there, are we, and did you guys talk about setting up another one, or what's the process going to be? That's my discussion.
Ms. Harmon?
I think my, I think my understanding of that is that we would discuss the 2020 budget at our next meeting, was it our next meeting? And then at that point, have discussion based on the changes that were made, based on the email that Lonnie had sent just recently of the revised budget, and then determine whether or not it would be passed.
Okay, so it'll be on the January 13th?
The 13th, yep.
Correct.
So enough time?
Ms. Smart?
I went to that budget and finance workshop, and most of the cities in Arkansas have a city council budget committee, and the council points its own committee so that they can go over the budget that the mayor has presented and make suggestions and changes. Does anyone else on the council feel like that's a good idea?
Not in Eureka.
Well, we can do it, it's in the law.
Before.
What are you asking, or what are you saying? Can you repeat that again?
The council can have its own committee and talk to the, talk to the department heads and discuss the budgets and basically decide, you know, their own priorities. We can have our own priorities, we don't have to accept the mayor. Not that the mayor's priorities are better or worse, it's just that we have a fiduciary responsibility to, to do our part.
Ms. Harmon?
And most cities do have their own council budget committees.
So, Ms. Harmon?
I just, the only question I have is, I know that we did have department heads here, and we did have a workshop, so did you, do you feel like we weren't able to ask the questions that week?
I don't know how many police officers we have, I don't know what they're getting paid, I don't know who the new police officer is. We're supposed to pass an ordinance stating that, how many officers there are, the police chief's supposed to hire a new police officer, and we're supposed to approve that police officer. There's all kinds of questions that the council has sort of been left out of, so. But the budget is a big one, because I see things in the budget I'd like to change, but I'd also would like to see the details so that I know what I'm looking at. And there are, there's specific details that we don't have. I asked for them once and I was told to file a freedom of information act request.
You didn't hear that from me?
I heard it from Lonnie. Lonnie was told by you.
You did not, you just, you didn't hear it from me.
As city council representatives, aren't we allowed to talk to any department head and ask the questions that Harry stated?
Well, we, that's why we have the department heads here at these meetings, so it can be in the public meeting so we can have those.
Okay, so we, we can't like go to Lonnie or, that's considered ex parte?
No, it's just getting into, we have six, six council meetings, six council members, and each council member goes to each department heads, it gets, not the best way to...
No, and it's not something I was going to do, I was just kind of playing off a Harry, but we are allowed to do that if we chose to.
Well, always, the council is always available. If they want more information, we will, they're always available to the council for the budget. Everything is available, of course, as Lonnie said or told Mr. Meyer, the freedom of information, if people want to know all the salaries, we have, we've got the number. When y'all approve, when we approve the budget, we approve the budget. There's a line item in there for salaries on there, and it's...
That's one big number.
That's true.
And it's not the point of, it's council to micromanage how much a council, a police officer gets paid.
I tend to disagree.
It's not, it's, the department heads submit a budget to the mayor, the mayor gives the budget to y'all. It's not the council saying that we only pay the council, the people X amount of money or define what their goals are. That's micromanaging and that gets into...
Well, his total budget is number is based on the number of officers that he has, and it's in city code that the council decides how many officers he has. I think I disagree with you. I'm not going to get into argument, right, and debate with you over that. Ms. Harmon?
I just have a question, as far as your, and I'm really just kind of in the middle, I'm just making or asking this. When, when you have your department head meetings related to a New Year's budget, do you, do they, they probably submit to you or discuss with you what they're adding, what they're removing, and why their budget is changing, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so is that something that you could provide council with on a yearly basis going forward when we do these... going forward when we do these budget approvals, that you could just give us a recap as to why their numbers are changing? You know, whether it's I'm hiring one new employee, we've got, you know, X number retiring, whatever it is, or we've got these projects that we're working on. Is that something that you?
We have not hired, we have a set number of police officers.
And I'm not even talking about just police, right?
In any, you know, with the fire department or the police department. We can go back and look at our last budgets and see that there, it's pretty well flat. So we haven't, we've got an extra, the same amount of officers that we've had for the last six years are the same amount that we budgeted for.
Okay, I guess what I'm asking is, since you know.
Any changes is what I'm saying.
Okay, but I guess for someone that may be new, they may not know that there hasn't been any changes. So if the budget changed significantly because they, they, you know, the fire department wanted to hire an extra person, or the police department wanted to hire an extra person, or they wanted to buy three cars instead of two cars this year, is there any way for you just to recap some of those basic things?
Absolutely. And that's what we try to do when we're doing this with our budget workshops.
Which is discussion. What I'm asking is, is there any way for you to recap that and include that as a written form?
Right. As a rule, there hadn't been any major changes in the last five years. We've been under the budget restraints and we haven't had any changes.
Okay, so what you're saying is, the reason why you haven't done it, the reason why you don't need to do it is because no major changes have happened.
That's correct.
Based on your overall budget.
The council gets to see what the capital is. Now, that's a chance where the council does get a chance to see whether or not we're buying new police cars or, and where we are on that. But as far as personnel, we've been pretty much on a hiring, we have not hired any new people in large, the police department or the fire department.
Okay, and I guess I'm, again, I'm not really focused on necessarily we're hiring new employees, but say if we decided we wanted to build a new whatever, that would be a recap of why our budget has changed?
Correct.
Okay, that's all I'm saying. Is it, if, you know, there was a quick recap, but?
Yeah, absolutely. Ms. Martin?
The point of, the whole point of my idea here is that I just seem to run into, against the wall here. I'd like to find the money to put more money in the public works. Our infrastructure and, you know, we're, those boys are not getting paid properly. And they don't get, they're not getting starting pay is very poor. And we need to find the money to jack that up.
We have been trying to raise the salaries as a public work, their starting salaries. Whereas when we go through our infrastructures, we're looking and seeing the monies that's being spent to do more on our infrastructure. Those are part of our, the capital work and what Dwayne was talking about when he was here. We have, right now, the point where Dwayne is starting them out at thirteen dollars an hour, and then after thirty, ninety days, they get a raise on that.
That's not what he said the other day.
Well, I don't know what it was.
Ten?
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars.
Ten dollars an hour. And then that's minimum wage. And then after ninety days, they get a raise if they stick around. We realize we have a problem with trying to get people come in.
Now, I don't hate the police department, but, you know, there's that big figure there that million.
The police department isn't.
That million two is a lot of money and two cars a year they buy, how many, they got fourteen cars? And how many officers do we have?
We cannot take the water fund, that's a separate fund, from water and sewer and streets. Those are independent funds that we cannot mix monies with.
We can't take the money from that.
We can't take them. We've been loaning money.
Well, we can put money in.
We've loaned money to the departments.
Well, how about?
To the water and sewer before.
Then we need to examine the budget a little closer to not loan money to them to operate.
Well, we have done that with raising our rates and also with the infrastructure.
That's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about the entire budget. Why do we need a million two police vehicles? Why do we need two cars bought every year? Why do we need fourteen cars and fourteen officers?
Because of tourism. To run this city.
I've not seen the justification. He's not been here every month giving us a report.
I'll have the police chief up here giving a report if that's what you would like.
It's required by the code. He's supposed to give us a report every month.
We get a, okay, that's probably my fault that I have not sent you a report. I get the report and I apologize if I have not sent it on to you.
I mean, he should be here so he can answer questions with his report.
In regard to the report, I will send that to you.
But you do understand what I'm talking about. It's not a matter of raising water and sewer rates, although I guess we can look at that, but it's a matter of what's more important. If we don't have water, we don't have a fire department. If we don't have streets, the police can't get to the crime scene.
Right now, I understand your point very well. Well, we were discussing the additional budget meetings and setting the date on that. This is something, if our next meeting, I'll be glad to have the police chief here. And Dwayne also, if that's what you would like.
Okay.
All right.
So where are we with the discussion?
Voting on the date, yes?
Yes. We got a motion to.
It is not a motion. It's something about an email.
Now, we don't have, we're.
My question was.
Oh, yeah.
Is it on the agenda for next meeting?
It is.
That was the discussion.
That was the discussion. All right. I think.
How did it get there?
How did what get? We gotta make a motion to put the budget on the meeting.
Who's on first?
No, not you. That's the agenda meeting. All right. I think we got the next discussion is the auditorium. Mr. Thomas, you want to?
Excuse me, hold it, please.
Yes.
If I'm understanding correctly, there is a perception that it was agreed to have another budget discussion at the first meeting in January.
Correct.
I am asking, when did that happen?
At our last meeting. The workshop.
The workshop.
In the workshop.
I'll go back and read the minutes. I definitely don't, okay, all right.
That will be on the agenda at the next meeting and we'll be discussing the agenda.
Budget.
The budget, I'm sorry. At the next, we will put on the agenda for the next meeting, discussion of the budget workshop. Mr. Thomas, you had the.
Yeah, a motion to discuss auditorium finance.
Second.
About, I think it was actually two months ago during our budget, end of the month budget workshop, I brought up a discussion of somehow carrying the fifty thousand dollars that's in this year's budget for the auditorium over to next year. And there were a lot of blank faces and a lot of people looking at me like they'd never heard of such a thing. Since that time, the CAPC has actually done exactly that same thing with twenty thousand dollars that they had in their budget. You voted to set aside that twenty thousand dollars in a separate bank account so that it could be used for Hope Festival next year?
It could be used for.
Festival, for music.
Any.
So I'm just, I'm just saying, what I'm wanting us to do with the auditorium fifty thousand dollars can obviously be done because two of our council people here have done it on another commission. So I would like, again, to make a motion that we get a separate bank account for that fifty thousand dollars so that when we start January 1st, we'll have sixty thousand dollars in the new budget and fifty thousand dollars from this year's budget. So we'll have a hundred and ten thousand dollars for auditorium remodeling.
I'll second that.
We have a discussion?
Ms. Harmon?
Okay, so when we were at the workshop for the budget, if I'm remembering it correctly, what we discussed was that the fifty thousand had disappeared on the 2020 budget that was allocated for the auditorium, for the fix for the basement, right? And we had a discussion about what were we gonna do in 2020 and where was that money gonna come from? And the discussion I remembered was that we were going to add to the 2020 budget a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars for the basement repair or upgrade to the 2020 budget, which we will be discussing on the 13th.
Okay, Mr. Clark told me today that it's sixty thousand dollars that they had put in there.
It was a hundred and forty-five.
In the new budget?
The whole amount. Terry, you remember?
I remember.
We were gonna add the hundred and forty-five because that's what you said the whole project would cost because we did not have anything allocated. And our budget's already approved at the CAPC for the year.
I remember it, Susan.
So.
So.
And I have not gone through his budget that he sent us as revised to see if it's in there?
It doesn't, no, it's not revised.
You forgot to do that? Okay.
We're gonna have to look at some other areas to get that. We do have sixty thousand in there.
Okay, so you.
Hundred and forty-five.
So you changed it from a hundred and forty-five to sixty?
Yes, because we're having a hard time. I mean, again, we're gonna have to go into the reserves to get the rest of that money to do that. And if the council wants to do that, that's, the council can do that.
I recall.
Part of our budget.
I recall that my recommendation was, is just to make it a hundred thousand for this year, which, because that would be fifty for this year and the fifty carryover from last year would be the same thing. It wouldn't be putting in that separate account, but it was, it would be the equivalent of doing that. It was a line item of one hundred. And then we came up with the other and you had asked us about the CAPC. And at that time, you know, we didn't know what the CAPC was gonna do. And the CAPC may still participate. It just depends on where we land with this thing. If we finally get to where, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna start doing something, you know, a real actual commitment and the hammer starts swinging and things get torn out, then, you know, I just don't know if that's ever gonna happen, you know?
Mr. Thomas?
I'm not a calendar and I didn't sleep at the Holiday Inn, so I have a real question. If you're, if you're, if you have, if you need a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and you have sixty thousand in the budget right now and you've got to find the other, what, eighty thousand, why not save the fifty thousand that's in the 2019 budget and then you'll only have to find thirty thousand next year or before we approve the 2020 budget?
That's why I second you.
Thank you.
I mean, I know on paper we're losing the fifty thousand, but that's because it was in the 2019 budget, correct?
And we can save it.
And that money just then flows back into where? Reserves or general?
Okay.
So essentially, it's still there, right? It's just not, it's still there, it's just not allocated, correct?
It's out there, it's there, but that doesn't mean you can use it or touch it unless it's allocated properly.
Well, that's what I'm saying. It just isn't allocated. It's there, it's just not allocated. Okay.
So what we'd do, it'd be an allocation, an extra sixty thousand or eighty thousand to do that.
So is there.
I think Mr. Thomas's motion was.
What was your amount? What was your amount?
Fifty thousand that's in 2019 budget.
And the sixty that they put in the revised?
Yeah, in the 2020 budget, it's sixty.
Okay, gotcha.
But my question is, if I withdraw my motion to save this fifty thousand dollars, what assurance do you have that this hundred and forty-five is gonna be in? Are you gonna put the hundred and forty-five in the next year's budget? Because it's not there, you asked for it two weeks ago and it's not there today, you know?
Right. And I put sixty in because we didn't have the hundred and forty-five.
Right.
We didn't have the eighty. Now, I mean, because I didn't want to go into the reserves. We can do that and I told Lonnie not to. It's up to the council. If we want to go into, we feel that we're spending a hundred and forty thousand dollars downstairs, it's gonna benefit us. And I mean, you know, I still have a problem with CAPC not putting any money into it.
Yeah, we never put a dime in here.
I mean, you know, CAPC utilizes this building a lot more than we.
Now, come on, let's don't get into that argument. Let's, that's not even, let's go.
That's an age-old.
I gotta wear both hats and that ain't fine with me.
Both you and Susan, both of you. And it's an age-old argument. So, Ms. Harmon?
Yeah, I think I'll kind of stick with Terry on this. The CAPC on an average year puts about a hundred and ten thousand dollars into this building. And that's not for events and everything like that. That's for keeping this place open.
Utilities.
Now, I know that the utilities are paid by the city and that amounts anywhere from thirty to forty. So.
Utilities and taxes, I mean, insurance.
About between thirty and forty a year, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's quite a bit of money that is going.
More than that, yeah.
Okay.
How much do you know?
So forty to fifty? Regardless, there's still, there's a lot of money that goes into this building that is shared by the city and by the CAPC. So I know that the CAPC did not put it in their 2020 budget to fund the additional renovations in the basement. We have been talking about the renovations for at least two years now. We've come up with a number based on your information, which is a hundred and forty-five thousand or roughly a hundred and forty thousand, somewhere in there.
Right.
You're saying you've got sixty that you've put into the revised budget for 2020. Bob has said that we've got that fifty out there. If all we need to do is allocate that fifty back to that line item for the auditorium, if that money is truly there, then we've got a hundred and ten. Now, you still, I understand what you're saying. I understand. But we're trying to get to a number that makes sense for 2020, whether it's a hundred thousand, whether it's sixty thousand, whether or not it's fifty. The, we still need some money if that project is gonna happen in 2020. And that's why we discussed it at the workshop.
If the project is gonna happen in 2020, we need a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, and so then the question is.
We're gonna have to send back in with an extra eighty thousand.
Okay, well, then the question is, is that project, going back to what Terry said, is that project going to happen in 2020? Is it a possibility? Is it fifty percent? Is it thirty percent? Is it ninety percent? I mean, where are we?
It's a hundred percent if we have a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars and if the police got in.
Meaning you could pull the trigger tomorrow if you knew you had a hundred and forty-five dollars, four hundred and forty-five.
I'm hitting the drawings and probably, and I said I should have had more of the out for bids. We're waiting on some specification structural engineer. We're ready, probably within the next several weeks of putting it out for bids. So by January, we'll be able to have the bids ready and then report to the council of what the actual cost will be. But if it goes with what the architect's estimated cost is, we'll need a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to do the project.
And the difference between, the difference between the larger elevator, which is a big discussion when we first started this discussion, I wasn't on council that time, is how much from the smaller to the bigger? Twenty, fifteen?
I wouldn't even go with that.
Okay, I'm just.
Yeah, it's roughly twenty thousand.
About twenty thousand dollars, right?
Thirty thousand. Mr. Thomas?
This is a question. If the revised budget shows revenue over expenditures at the end of the year with approximately four hundred thousand dollars and you need eighty, why do you have to go to reserves for that eighty? Why can't you just say you're gonna have three hundred and twenty thousand dollars at the end of the year and put?
Because that's part of the reserve.
That is your reserves.
That is.
Well, I mean, it's, you know, when you say raid your reserves, it sounds a lot worse than let's just revise our budget and show a three hundred and twenty thousand dollar net gain.
That's up to the council to do.
Right.
Mr. Thomas?
Well, then I guess the thing to do is wait till the, we have our little workshop at the meeting and then make that recommendation and build it into the budget and approve it.
And I can have Lonnie go ahead and be prepared for that also.
I would suggest it. If we're, I mean, if we're, if we're gonna do something with the basement.
Let's do it.
Yeah, let's do it or do something else. I'm getting pretty tired of this crap. Sorry for the word, but it's kind of waddling up on me.
Any further discussion? Any, any further discussion? All right, that brings us down to our agenda setting.
Are you, did, did you say that we had to go ahead and add that budget, budget discussion to the one thirteen agenda?
Correct.
During this time?
Well, no, I mean, it will be, I mean, we can't...
Okay, so it's an automatic, we don't have to make a motion or a second?
We'll have to put it on.
Okay, gotcha.
A workshop before the meeting, right?
That's not what I heard.
That's not, we were having a workshop, I mean, we're gonna discuss the budget during the meeting.
During the meeting, yeah.
Okay. Yeah. Anybody else have anything? All right.
But you was the sponsor, okay?
Okay. All right, city council comments. Mr. Thomas?
Yeah, well, this is, I have two things to say. I don't want you to get confused with Harry's council committee, but I would like to point out that, because I read the newspapers for the past three or four years, in Fayetteville and Rogers and Bentonville, you'll see that their councils start to work on the budget in October. And what they do is they take what we call our vision plan, and they look at their plan, they used to have a ten-year plan, and they develop council priorities. And those priorities are then incorporated into the mayor's budget so that you, and we call it a mayor's budget, it's actually the city budget, and it should be developed by the, the council and the mayor. So next year, this team that gets along so well and functions so well, this, you know, might be our last year, because none of us know who will be back after the next election, but I'd like to see us model for future councils the work that should be done on the budget. It's not our job just to sit here, and as good as the mayor's budget is, it's, it's not our job to sit here and just, you know, look at what he wants the city. We're supposed to be looking at our vision plan. We're supposed to have a coordinated forward movement. So I'd, I'd hope that in, in next year, in October, we'd start having some council workshops to define what our goals for the city are. That's one thing. The second thing I have is, at the meeting, at last, two weeks ago, was our second meeting of November, and we had a scheduled workshop for 5:15 to discuss the budget, the 2019 budget. I arrived at 5:10, and I was told that was over, it had already been done. I'd just like to point out to you that when there's a scheduled workshop, you can't change it. I, I don't know who changed it and, and sought to, you're looking, was it that not true? I was told that's what happened.
I know, we had emails, so we, it was communicated to us...
That's nobody's thing.
At what time we were supposed to be here for whatever, whatever meeting we were...
There were two workshops.
Two workshops.
Yeah, there was a workshop at, at four.
At four. And then there was supposed to be another one at 5:15, the 2019 budget workshop. And if you do it before 5:15, you've changed the time of that workshop. You couldn't possibly have voted to change it, because you can't take a vote unless you have a meeting. So my question is, how did it get changed? And was there nobody here that didn't, couldn't say, you can't change the time of a published workshop? You have to stick to the schedule? It, it really perturbed me that I came here expecting to participate in that workshop, and it was over with. So that's all I wanna say.
Ms. Gray?
Happy holidays.
Ms. Snyder?
Happy safe holidays.
Ms. Harmon?
Nothing.
Ms. Far, Ms. Meyer?
Well, Merry Christmas.
Ms. Rockland?
Merry Christmas, you betcha. It'll be a good Christmas. Town looks great, good things happening, so, yeah, Merry Christmas.
All right, we have, coming up, on the twelfth of this month, we, at 7:00 PM, the High Hat Christmas at Five and Dime Collective, held at the Crescent Hotel Conservatory. It's also on the twelfth and thirteenth, starting around seven o'clock on Friday, and then, and then eight-thirty on the thirteenth. Also on the thirteenth is the, at 7:30 is the Immortal Be Loved by the Northwest Arkansas Ballet Theater, free admissions here at the auditorium. Doors open at 7:00 PM. On the fourteenth, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM, is a night of merry-making, caroling in Basin Park, night shopping, and night of a thousand Santas and living windows. Also on the fourteenth, at 7:30, is the Ozark Corral Holiday Concert at the Odd.
I hear, I hear they're really a great group. Really something.
I heard they should be wonderful, yeah.
Wow.
Ten dollars for adults and students are free. And then on the twentieth, at 7:00 PM, we have Home for the Holidays Concert at the Odd. Doors open at 6:30 PM with free admission and donations taken at the door for Flint Street Food Bank. And then also on the twenty-first, at 7:00 PM, we have the Grady Nichols Falling in Love with Christmas. Doors open at 6:30 PM and free admission. So we have a lot of activities going on, and come down and see us and enjoy it. Happy holidays. The motion to...
Salute.
Second, on favor? All right. Any opposed? Salute.
Happy holidays.